Good evening. I'm Erin Boucher, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Liz Poploski and Shrewsbury Media Connection for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to all residents who would like to address the committee regarding concerns of policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to share this week?
No.
Okay. I do have an item. I would like to congratulate Dr. Sawyer on receiving the President's Award at the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents mat their spring meeting on May 23rd, 2025. Dr. Sawyer was honored for his service to the community, leadership in the association, and advancement of the profession. This award was presented in recognition of Dr. Sawyer's contributions in supporting the organization's work and his superintendent colleagues over the years. And I just wanted to briefly read what Dr. Peers, the president of the association, stated about Dr. Sawyer. He said that Joe is widely recognized and respected by his colleagues. He is keenly aware of best practices in education, leadership, and public policy, serving as a valuable resource to our association and his colleagues. His intellect, sense of humor, breadth of experience, and active involvement in education policy are both benefits to the interests of our children and the interests of superintendents as district leaders. He's a champion of children and a respected leader in the Commonwealth, and Mass is pleased to present this award to him. So I would just like to congratulate Dr. Sawyer on this. Well. The next item on our agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. And I was not able to keep that on the down-low well enough. So, much appreciated, and I appreciate the award from the Superintendent Association very much. I just want to recognize all the incredible work that went into making all of the senior events for the class of 2025 very successful. Lots of parent involvement, especially with the senior picnic, their prom, then moving forward to commemoration and the senior faculty dinner, and then graduation last Thursday evening, where the weather cooperated. It was a wonderful evening. But the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes to make all of those events run smoothly. And I know in speaking to some folks who had not had the opportunity to see the way that Shrewsbury High School recognizes its graduating class, some of the comments I received were particularly about how student-centered they are, how the students themselves, particularly with commemoration and graduation, did such an excellent job with their remarks in their speaking. I want to thank Patricia Busso from our mathematics department, who was the faculty member selected to speak at commemoration, who did a wonderful job. All of the students and different folks who contributed. And then all the behind-the-scenes work, Greg Marso and his team in terms of the audio-visual, Shrewsbury Media Connection, who broadcast, I did send out a link to the YouTube of the graduation ceremony itself for people to be able to watch. But it's just, we're part of a first-rate community, and we do an excellent job, and I think a first-class job celebrating our graduating seniors. So thank you to everyone who made that such a success last week. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great. Our next time-scheduled appointment is staff recognition for exceptional efforts. And the first honoree tonight, we will be talking about Noel Freeman. The Massachusetts School Nurse Organization has recognized Shrewsbury Public Schools' Director of School Nursing, Noel Freeman, as the Mass School of Nursing Association Nurse Administrator of the Year for 2024-2025. This annual recognition honors a practicing registered nurse leader for outstanding contributions in the nursing specialty of school nursing. And our state representative, Hannah Kane, is available tonight to assist with these awards.
So if Noel and Representative Kane could come to the table. And while they're doing that, I'd like to make a few remarks about Ms. Freeman, who are referred to as Noel, because I know she's not that formal. I had the good fortune of working with Noel for the first time when I became the principal of Oak Middle School a number of years ago, and Noel was serving as one of the school nurses there, and recognized right away what an outstanding professional she was. I had the opportunity a number of years later to appoint her as the school nurse administrator, the director of school nursing here at the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And she's also retiring, so she'll be recognized again in the next segment of the meeting as well. But I had the opportunity on our opening day for staff a few years ago to recognize her with the Thomas Kennedy Award, which goes to someone who's demonstrated extraordinary leadership and represents the values of our school district. This, of course, was after she had helped navigate the district through an unprecedented pandemic, and I could not be, I cannot imagine having gone through that process without Noel's leadership. Some of what I talked about when I did give her that award had to do with her tremendous expertise, her unflappable demeanor, her thoughtful pragmatism, and her Tyler's devotion to doing whatever it would take to get the job done, even under those most challenging of circumstances. Her leadership, calm reassurance, her critical guiding us through that beyond, her leadership beyond the pandemic over all of her years working with us, she has done an extraordinary amount of work to strengthen our school nursing program. She also has coordinated our school wellness advisory committee for those years. Our district's a healthier place, and our district is a better place for students and for staff and for our nurse team as a result of Ms. Freeman's leadership. So I want to congratulate her and thank her. It was outstanding that she was recognized by her state association. No one's more deserving. And with that, I will turn it over to Representative Kane.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. So I'm thrilled to be here with you. I had, when I learned that you were being given this award, I said to Joe, is there going to be any public recognition, or should I just give, like, find a time with Noel to give her the citation? I know what you would have preferred. But Joe was like, no, 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 we can do it in public. And I was like, that's great. I've had the honor of knowing you in different capacities. So as a parent of a child who had chronic diseases and had strong support all through her time in the schools, as somebody who's worked with you on SCAPE, the Coalition for Addiction Prevention Education, we did a lot of work for many years, thinking about how do we help Shrewsbury, both people who are sort of unaware of some of the challenges of addiction, but also families who are facing it. And as Joe said, you're just, you were always an incredible resource and thoughtful, and you took everybody's into consideration. So we had a group with students, we had a group with administrators, we had people from SYFS. It was just a very well-rounded group, and it was an honor to work with you on that. And you've also been an excellent advocate. I oftentimes get emails from Noel asking you the status of legislation and why hasn't it moved? So I've just always appreciated that you have done such a great job in all facets of your role, the ones that people have the opportunity to see and the ones that you just do quietly to help out. So I wanted to present you with a citation from the House of Representatives, and it is, "In recognition of winning the 2025 School Nurse Administrator of the Year Award, thank you for all your hard work to keep Shrewsbury Public School students healthy. Congratulations. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success." And it's signed by the Speaker of the House and myself. Congratulations, Noel.
Thank you. The next honoree tonight is Albert Munoz. Latinos for Education honors Latino educators across the Commonwealth. Shrewsbury High School School Adjustment Counselor Albert Munoz was recognized with the 2025 Latino Educators Shine Award at a reception held at the Massachusetts State House by Latinos for Education in partnership with State Senator Adam Gomez. The award honors Latino educators nominated by their state legislatures for their work. Would you like to come up, please?
We are really pleased that Representative Kane reached out with this opportunity to nominate someone for this award. I put that out to our principals. Mr. Buzidlo immediately got back to me, saying that Mr. Munoz, Albert, would do a wonderful, be a wonderful representative and recipient. In some of the information that came from people from the nomination process and folks at the high school, Albert is a school adjustment counselor at Shrewsbury High School. He supports a very large caseload of students with their social, emotional needs. He's particularly known for helping them find their own voice, that he's known as a team player. He collaborates extremely well with other educators, brings creative solutions to help students solve problems, and he's described as a beacon of positivity, compassion, and empathy, that he consistently goes above and beyond to serve his students, families, and colleagues. So really, again, a tremendous asset. He makes the climate and culture of our Shrewsbury High School community better by uplifting his students with his unwavering care and dedication, is what the nomination said. We're really pleased to honor Al as someone who has done an outstanding job for us in a really critically important position. And with that, I'll turn it over to the representative.
Sure. Well, I was thrilled when Joe got back to me with your nomination. And one of the things I found particularly moving to me was the helping students find their own voice. I really wish I had somebody in high school help me find my own voice. So I just think that these opportunities that we have at the state level to acknowledge people in our communities who are going above and beyond and doing it just because that's who they are, but making such a critical difference. So I unfortunately was not able to be there with you at the ceremony because my husband had a colonoscopy and no one else could drive him. And I'm very sorry. I would have much wanted to thank you. However, Carrie was there, and she sent me some great pictures, and I know that you also had other colleagues there with you. But I did want to personally congratulate you. I was happy to nominate you, and I have a citation from the House of Representatives as well. "In recognizing your winning a 2025 Latino Educators Shine Award, thank you for uplifting Shrewsbury High School students in your role as a school adjustment counselor. Shrewsbury is grateful for your compassion and positivity. Congratulations." And again, it is signed by the Speaker of the House and myself. Thank you for all you do. Please stay here in Shrewsbury for the rest of your career doing it. And thank you to Joe and Todd and your colleagues for nominating you for this award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I should probably say my husband's fine for it.
Earlier this school year, a number of staff provided crucial assistance in dealing with a serious medical incident at Shrewsbury High School. Those individuals include nurses Michelle Kraus, Pam Johnson, and Kaylee Weaver, science and engineering teacher Rick Doherty, and school resource officer Trevor Andrews. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Have a seat, please. Yes. Representative can join, too. That would be great. That's good. We're really celebrating in some extraordinary work that this team did. Earlier this spring, we had a high school student who was in Mr. Doherty's physics class, and Mr. Doherty noticed that he was essentially slumping in his chair, went to check on him more closely and realized that he was losing and lost consciousness. Mr. Doherty immediately cleared the room, called the nurses' office for assistance. The nurses and our school resource officer, Officer Andrews, responded extremely quickly, following the protocols that they've practiced and drilled. This turned out to be a situation where that the automatic defibrillator needed to be used. And we found out from the student's family later on that what ultimately had been the cause of the heart issue is something that roughly 10% of people who have that issue outside of a hospital setting, only about 10% survive. And of those 10%, many have permanent damage due to lack of oxygen. This student, fortunately, has no adverse symptoms or issues as a result of the quick-thinking action and literally life-saving action that this team of professionals took at Shrewsbury High School that day. Something that's remarkable on top of that is that in addition to their heroic efforts, the context that that happened within is that there are many drills that happen over the course of a year in terms of safety and security. The school, the prior day, had had a fire drill, and after any kind of drill like that, they always get their team together, including these folks, and go over what are some other situations we might come up and need to respond to. And they actually discussed responding to an unresponsive teacher in a classroom, same situation, literally the day before. And Mr. Buzidlo and Mr. O'Connell and the team, the fact that they are consistently thinking about how is it they will respond to certain emergencies certainly was serendipitous that that had been discussed the day prior. So I am just unbelievably grateful for the work that you did to respond in such a professional and skillful way, using the AED as necessary and as a result, literally saving one of our students' lives in a way that he will go on to be able to, without any adverse effects. So thank you, and again, I'll turn it over to Representative Kane.
Sure. So I learned of this from the mom on Mother's Day, who sent me the email, sharing what a poignant Mother's Day it was to be celebrating still having three children. And it really, it certainly struck me in what she wrote, being so grateful for just the quick work that you all did, and how it could have gone so very differently, so easy, had you all not just risen to the moment, had there not been the practice of thinking about how to respond to these scenarios, so that it isn't, you're not questioning what's the next move, you're just in action mode. And so I wanted to come here as well and celebrate what you did to save someone's life, who, as Joe said, the chances of it being saved were slim, especially with no detrimental impacts. And now that this student has a bright future ahead is just amazing, and it would not have happened without the five of you and many others who supported, I know, helping move other students and doing all that while you all were focused on saving a life. So I have from the House of Representatives citations for each of you, and I will just say that it is in recognition of your heroic actions to save the life of a Shrewsbury High School student. Shrewsbury is deeply grateful, your quick thinking, compassion, and expertise, and we're all so fortunate to have such committed and caring professionals working in our school systems on behalf of all students and staff. So thank you for what you did to save a life, and thank you, Joe, for making sure that we could acknowledge it, because I think sometimes things happen in schools, and it sort of stays within the school community. But this is just an example of what amazing people we have working in our school system. And I want to acknowledge and thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
So again, we're incredibly proud of all of these educators and staff who have supported all this excellent work. And at this point, if the school committee wanted to make any comments about Ms. Freeman, Mr. Munoz's, and our team from the high school relative to the honors this evening.
Just congratulations to everyone for these awards. I think for Noel, I've worked with you for a long time, and this role as a school committee member, and you're extremely humble and extremely hardworking. And my view into that was more during COVID, and everything that you did behind the scenes to get with your nursing staff to make sure everything was being done correctly, everything with the children were taken care of, staff was taken care of. And there were meetings constantly during that period. It was, that's all we did, was meet and talk and strategize. And I think you guided our district in a way that a lot of others weren't. And you're retiring, I'm so happy for you. Now, maybe you can relax a little, but thank you for everything. Mr. Munoz, thank you to you for the award that you're getting and helping our students. And with Representative Kane, please stay. We have great staff, and this is what we want to keep, these great teachers, so thank you. And to the team with the student, I think we heard about it, and it's a student issue. We just heard about there was an incident. And around, maybe it was Mother's Day as well, we got an email from the family. We were like, oh, my goodness. Like, this was way above and beyond, and an issue that could have gone very different. So for all of the staff to step up, and Mr. Buzidlo running the high school the way he does, I think this is the type of community we have. We take care of each other, we make sure everybody gets what they need, but the effort, this is in my 17 years, I've never seen anything like that in what this staff did to save a life. So thank you. This is the community we are. Thank you.
Thank you. So congratulations. Also, as my colleague mentioned, this is an exemplary team of leaders and also players in our school system. We are deeply humbled to have you all representing our Shrewsbury Schools, and also giving your service over the years, and also keep giving it forward. And with everyone that's been helping with the student that is in a situation, I think that is really a good karma. So the kid has really good karma on his back for sure, having you all there, helping him, assisting him to revive without any deleterious effects of a long-term impact. So we are so proud to have you all. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. Keep, you're all the stars of our SPS system, so thank you. Thanks for making it a great place for our students and families to be part of.
I would just like to reiterate my colleague's comments to Ms. Freeman. Thank you so much for all that you've done for our district. I was a parent during COVID, I wasn't on the committee, but you were such a reassuring presence at all the meetings during that time, your steady guidance. I remember seeing you at vaccine clinics, like, above and beyond. You, you know, I think you may have been one of the first people that I heard the word contract tracing from, you know? I mean, so all of the different ways that you quietly assisted beyond, behind the scenes. I know you're also very integral in helping with the opening of Maple in Maine, that you did a lot of work, again, you know, not seeking any credit or, you know, very humbly. So just, you've given so much to the district. We wish you all the best and happy and healthy retirement. And for Mr. Munoz, thank you so much for all that you've done in terms of being there for students. I'm so pleased to see that you received this award and continued good work. And for the team that saved the student's life, thank you. We received the email that Representative Kane did, and it was just so moving. Just, I get chills listening to the story, and it's just amazing that what you were able to do under those circumstances in such a pressure-filled environment. So just thank you for that, for your excellent work. We're so very appreciative. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Again, just thank you and congratulations to all. We're really pleased to be able to honor you this evening. So to wrap up, it would be wonderful, and maybe what might be easiest, if the committee maybe and I can get in front of the table, and then we'll have Representative Kane come up, and first, Ms. Freeman, and then Mr. Munoz, and then the team from the high school will do some photos, and then we'll let you be on your way to enjoy your evening. But how about one more round of applause for all of our members?
And now you're going to frame it when it falls.
All right, and our teams in the high school, please.
I should also say that Senator Moore was only able to be here tonight because he's at a conference, but he also extends his gratitude to all who saved a life and his congratulations to Noel and Albert for their recognition.
All right. Let's come on the floor guys in the back, and then we'll look into the way in front.
It's like the short people.
Our next time-scheduled appointment is staff recognition concerning our retirees. We received a document that shows all of the 2025 retirees' names, positions, schools, and years of service to Shrewsbury. And those retirees who would like to present brief remarks at the meeting will have an opportunity to do so. I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone.
Great. Thank you. So we have this year 17 staff that are ending their education careers with a well-deserved retirement. Altogether, they've served the students of Shrewsbury for 349 years, representing an average of 20.53 years of service in Shrewsbury, and some of them had previous educational experience as well. So not everyone could be here tonight. Some people had scheduled their own retirement parties tonight, others had family birthdays and things, but they all expressed their appreciation to the school committee. But we will have a few who are able to speak. What I'd like to start with first is administrative assistance. Neither was able to come tonight, but both have been extraordinary examples of service to Shrewsbury. Helen Kvarcian has served 30 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. She's retiring as an administrative assistant from Sherwood Middle School. So a round of applause for Helen. And Linda McBride almost has served as much as Helen, but she has served 26 years as an educator in Shrewsbury, and she's retiring as an administrative assistant from Floral Street School. Now, we also have two pair of edu- So I'm going to invite Pam to come up to the podium and speak. Pamela Johnson has served 24 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. She's retiring as a school nurse from Shrewsbury High School.
So I've been up here altogether too much already. Tonight, I'm going to make this brief. I started my career at the brand-new Shrewsbury High School in 2002, and I became the second nurse, along with my dear, dear friend Judy DeFalco, who was my absolute mentor and, and great, great friend. She taught me everything I know. And I've had two great managers after that. I had both Patty McCaffrey, who was our, for a while, at Oak Middle School and then, oh, Sherwood Middle School, and then she became our director. And now, I mean, the director, the administrator of the year. I mean, how can I have that as my current boss? So I've been really fortunate to work with tremendous, tremendous people. And just really want to say to the community that as a parent and as a staff member, you're getting a bang for your buck in this community. You really are. I think we really provide great education for kids. And thank you so much for my great years of friendship and camaraderie. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Heather Ledger is also here. She has served 26 years as an educator with 17 of those years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a French teacher from Shrewsbury High School. Heather, you're here?
Thank you. I had to write this down, so I didn't forget. I wanted to just take a moment to thank the district, my principal Todd Bzidlo, my director Ken Almeida, and my colleagues for the past 17 years of my 26-year career. Hardly seems possible that this chapter of my life is coming to a close. Seems like just yesterday that I was doing a demo lesson with oversized plastic bugs at Oak Middle School. I've truly enjoyed teaching the students of Shrewsbury. The moment when a student realizes how much they have learned over the course of the year, when you can see the pride in their accomplishment of their, on their faces, this has always been my reward. I'd first like to thank my friend and colleague Sandra Locke, the first teacher who welcomed me into the profession and into her family. She has been my rock. I'd also like to thank my Shrewsbury colleagues, both past and present, for welcoming me to this community. Those who were my colleagues from the beginning at Sherwood, Adriana Anderson and Jean Waye Ye, and Blondine Posidala and Monica Klun, my skiing buddies, lifelong friends, and support system here at the high school. Without them, teaching would have been just a job, not a place where I found my second family. Some special memories of mine include making crepes at Sherwood with some very enthusiastic students and parents, going on the first French field trip to Martinique in 2019, dressing up as in an inflatable donut float for my Krispy Kreme fundraiser, teaching French cooking and language during the enrichment programs, bringing upper-level French students and Francophone parents on an immersion luncheon into Boston, performing a bilingual puppet show with my students at Coolidge Elementary, like with the French Travel Club, being given the opportunity to have students of French, Spanish, and Portuguese interact with native speakers from all over the world using Talk Abroad, and finally, having the privilege of knowing and working with my colleague Jean Waye Ye, my beloved friend. List could go on and on, but I will stop there. This is not a goodbye, but merely à bientôt, as I'm sure I will all see all of you again. I'm off to spend more time with my family and start my second career as a travel advisor. Merci beaucoup pour les souvenirs.
Kimberly Nicola has served 35 years as an educator with 25 of those years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a health teacher from Oak Middle School.
Kim, there you are. There I am. The words I want to say is grateful. I'm grateful for the 25 years here and the bulk of my career as a teacher. I'm grateful the subject that I teach because it's very entertaining, and I hope that it's educating for the children, but I'm entertained all the time. And, and I love who I've, who's mentored me in the beginning and who I've mentored past and who, all my friends and family, and it's been a great time here. And I hope that I made a difference to all the kids that have come through my classroom. Thank you.
Ann Ross was not able to be here tonight, but she's served 24 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a grade four teacher from Floral Street School. And we've got another school nurse. They are very important people. Sandy Sorenson has served 20 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a school nurse from Calvin Coolidge School.
Hello. I just want to say a heartfelt thank you. After 20 years as a school nurse to the district, I felt that it was time to start a new chapter. At the start of my career in Shrewsbury, I was so lucky to be part of the floral community where all three of my kids attended. I then was able to continue my career at Parker Road and now Coolidge, caring for the students, working alongside amazing staff, especially the nursing staff who I've been able to call my friends. I will always treasure working with such a great group of nurses and being part of a special community. When I started at Coolidge during COVID, I met so many wonderful people, and I am so thankful I got to work beside them. They have been like a family to me, and I will always cherish the warm memories that I have. Thank you for all the support, the memories, and the trust. I will miss you all more than words can say. Thank you.
And Debbie Stanwick wasn't able to be here tonight, but she has served 31 years as an educator in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a grade three teacher from Floral Street School. So now we're moving on to our district leadership team. Robert Dunn wasn't able to be with us. He has served 22 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. He is retiring as a middle-level curriculum coordinator for social studies from Sherwood and Oak Middle Schools. And then there's Noel Freeman. She has served 21 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as the director of school nursing for the district. But she is doing a presentation after this, and she's going to speak then, so thank you, Noel. Tom O'Toole has served 39 years in education with 11 of those years in Shrewsbury. He is retiring as the director of performing arts for the district.
I just wanted to express my gratitude for the last 11 years, which seemed to have flown right by, but I suppose that happens when you're like doing meaningful work with a professional community. It was a privilege to lead my department to lots of great people that do great work and also to teach in, in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. On the first day when I got here, I was, I was really surprised because at the end of the first class that I taught, virtually every student thanked me on the way out of the school. And it was at that moment that I was like, I've really landed in a special place. So thank you for the last 11 years.
And Scott Yonker has served 32 years in education with 27 of those years in Shrewsbury. He is retiring as assistant principal from Oak Middle School.
Wow, we're there.
I'd spent 13 years teaching eighth-grade math here. Actually, my college, I expected I was going to teach high school my entire year, my entire career, and I ended up in middle school and just loved it, spent a lot of time teaching and supporting students in that, then moved for 14 years to an assistant principal role, which is almost unheard of around here. But been my great honor to do that. And I do have to thank my two mentors, Ann Kirchi and Ann Jones, for bringing me in and supporting me and making the administrator I became, and I am very grateful to all my time in Shrewsbury.
Why don't we recognize, if you want to make any comments about our retirees, then we have one other brief presentation to make as well, and, but maybe we can start with school committee comments and then we'll move to the next phase.
And congratulations to all the retirees. As I'm thinking of that myself, a few years from now, I'm so jealous, I'm getting there. But we have a really special district, and we have, we look at the tenure of people, you don't see that a lot in a lot of occupations, never mind just in teaching, but I, to me, I think teaching is one of the harder occupations, being a nurse in our schools. It's not the same as it was like when we were growing up. So thank you for everything you've done. You have made a huge difference in our district, and that's something you will always, you've touched all these children, that's something you will always have. And there is a lot of occupations that cannot say that. So thank you for everything that you've done.
And thank you. Congratulations once again. I totally agree that the tenure speaks volume here. So whether you're in Shrewsbury High School or a school district for two years or 35 years, so you've made an impact in every kid that you touch, you teach, taught, and then you have the conversation with. So that speaks a volume that carries forward with everyone. And then you might have an also opportunity to train and motivate others within your, within your peers over these years. So congratulations, well-deserved retirement. Hope you're having a great time ahead of that.
Thank you all for all of your years of service to our district, to our students, to our families. Thank you for all of the above and beyond work that you all have done to really make it impact in these students' lives. We're so grateful for your years of service. I wish, wish you all very well and happy, healthy retirements and you're, on to your next chapters. So thank you all. Congratulations. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I also want to echo all of those comments, appreciate the comments that were made by those who spoke. But for all of our retirees, whether they're here this evening or not able to be here, I just want, on behalf of all of the, the students and families and colleagues with whom they worked over their time in Shrewsbury, just express our gratitude and our congratulations. Someone mentioned about making a positive difference, and, and one thing that all of our retirees can be proud of is that when they look back, they, they did something with their professional career that truly improved the lives of others, and in this case, the lives of, of the children whom they served, as well as, as well as their families and their colleagues. And that is an impact they'll never fully understand the breadth of, but we know is very real and is incredibly important. So thank you for doing that important work, and congratulations and best wishes for the happiest and healthiest of retirements. We will have you come up in a, in a bit to shake the committee's hand and receive a token of appreciation from the district. But before that, we also want to recognize Ms. Malone. Ms. Malone is, is moving on from the district and at the end of this month or in a couple of weeks, and we're deeply appreciative for the work that she's done during her 13-year career here in Shrewsbury as the executive director of human resources. I'm going to borrow from some comments I made when I presented her with an award, a superintendent's award on opening day a few years ago, because I think it's important to note that the scope of the responsibilities in this role in, in leading human resources for a district of over 1,000 staff is certainly beyond what most people realize in terms of responsibilities and, and positive impact. The work that she does in terms of her office coordinating all of the hiring of all of our employees and making sure we're hiring the best possible people to, to serve our students. The feedback that we've received over the years about Barb and her work is that she has great skill that people recognize, particularly in resolving what, as you might imagine, are the most delicate and complex personal issues that might arise for folks, and, and whether that's a, a personal family situation someone has, a need to take a leave, it could be, you know, an, an issue or a dispute in the workplace. These are all things that require a very, and what she brings to it is a thoughtful and humane and empathetic approach to helping colleagues cope and, and work through these very difficult personal situations. In addition to that, she's been the key liaison to our employee associations. This evening, as, as usual, we have the leaders of the Shrewsbury Education Association, Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association here with us. And our ongoing positive relations with our employees is represented by those employee organizations. Ms. Malone's played a really key role in making sure that those lines of communication stay open, to make sure that we're able to work through issues and collaboratively solve them. And it's not an accident that we are not in the position many school districts are in, where there is an us-and-them mentality between staff and administration and the school committee, and Ms. Malone's work is, is a very big part of being responsible for that. In more recent years, she's taken on the important and time-consuming and complex work of coordinating our Title IX legal processes. That includes work in the student realm of, of potential student-to-student harassment. She, as you know, has done very important work, leading the teacher diversification project for our district. She's deeply committed to the core value of equity, and that's something that will leave a lasting legacy for her in terms of the, the groundwork that she's laid for that ongoing, those ongoing efforts. And so with that, I wanted to make sure that we, as a district, recognize the outstanding work that Barb Malone has done, and we wish her well going into the future. So with that, how about a round of applause for Barb? I know Barb has some remarks that she'd like to share.
So as some people know, I am moving into a new role within HR and higher education a little later this month, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to start by thanking the Shrewsbury School Committee, those past and present that I've come to work so closely with in the last 13 years. These individuals, of which we have three of them in front of us, work enormous amounts of hours volunteering their time for the betterment of the school department, and I appreciate all of you. I'd like to thank Joe, first of all, for the kind remarks and also for giving me this opportunity of a lifetime. It's been truly amazing and fascinating the entire time. You never stop learning in this role. I'd also like to thank the other members of the central office leadership team for their friendship and support throughout the years, as well as the school principals who have an extraordinary job to do each and every day. I'd like to thank assistant principals, directors, teachers, other roles such as school nurses, psychologists, adjustment counselors, curriculum coordinators, and paraeducators, and every role you can think of that keeps the school district running. I would like to thank the leaders of the various associations and unions for their collaborative efforts through the years, even when it got sticky. I would like to thank all the members of the teacher diversification project team for their efforts in supporting practices to help district leaders find the best teachers for Shrewsbury students, including teachers who reflect back the faces of the students we all serve. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the behind-the-window and behind-the-scenes workers in the central office, special education and student services office, and payroll office. The district can't run without you. Your collective efforts have always helped this district run smoothly. Admin assistants, school secretary- I want to start by thanking the Shrewsbury School Committee, those past and present that I've come to work so closely with in the last thirteen years. These individuals, of which we have three of them in front of us, work enormous amounts of hours volunteering their time for the betterment of the school department, and I appreciate all of you. I'd like to thank Joe, first of all, for the kind remarks, and also for giving me this opportunity of a lifetime. It's been truly amazing and fascinating the entire time. You never stop learning in this role. I'd also like to thank the other members of the Central Office Leadership Team for their friendship and support throughout the years, as well as the school principals, who have an extraordinary job to do each and every day. I'd like to thank assistant principals, directors, teachers, other roles such as school nurses, psychologists, adjustment counselors, curriculum coordinators, and paraeducators, and every role you can think of that keeps the school district running. I would like to thank the leaders of the various associations and unions for their collaborative efforts through the years, even when it got sticky. I would like to thank all the members of the Teacher Diversification Project Team for their efforts in supporting practices to help district leaders find the best teachers for Shrewsbury students, including teachers who reflect back the faces of the students we all serve. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the behind-the-window and behind-the-scenes workers in the Central Office, Special Education and Student Services Office, and Payroll Office. The district can't run without you. Your collective efforts have always helped this district run smoothly. Admin assistants, school secretaries, IT, all have an incredibly important role to play. I especially want to thank the current members of the HR team, Lindsay Stachowski and Sheri Robbins, for their teamwork, friendship, and the competencies we've all learned along the way, and for past members of the team, Katie Fox and Christine Matero. I'd like to specifically thank Brian LaRue, who as project manager for IT, has played a crucial role in bringing in some HR technology that will be implemented soon. I also want to thank the incredible collaboration with the Town Manager's Office, including Christina, Julie, Christine, Justin, Nick Taylor, Alex Gregg, and so many others, including Town Manager Kevin Mizikar. I have always been extremely proud to be a member of the Shrewsbury community in my professional life. My thanks, gratitude, and warm wishes for all of you. Thank you.
Well, Barb's walking away as we make our comments. Some of you may know, I'm really good friends with Barb's brother-in-law, so I'll never forget, I got, I think it was a text or an email from Luke, "Don't say anything but", and I'm like, oh, like I knew Barb, but I didn't know Barb. So when she was coming into the mix, it was nice to know that there was someone coming to fill Tom Kennedy's role, which is a big role, and HR is not easy. You have to make hard decisions, you have to give sometimes good information and bad information. And we've worked very closely together since Barb joined, because I've worked with her and with Kelly and everybody on negotiations for years. And Barb was that kind of calming voice in the room and helping us see things from a different perspective, our understanding from that HR perspective. The one thing I know about Barb is she cares deeply about every single individual that she comes in contact with, and that is always her first, like, what can we do best for our staff as we're looking at HR issues? So you've got big shoes to fill, you'll be missed, but thank you for everything you've done. I've learned a lot from you in all the years that we've worked together, and doing that negotiations with you also has helped me in the negotiations I do in my private work. So thank you, but you will be missed.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for the service. I think the leadership efficient or skills or the leadership value shows how long the other people stay in that tenure, right? So if they like the leader, they stay longer, and then they serve the community well. So when there is a long tenure, staff means they're very happy with their leader and their policies and everything. So it speaks volumes about your, as Mr. Freck said, mentioned, your compassion towards the colleagues, and you are very diligent in negotiations, especially with the, like our diversity efforts in the hiring practices. So those are all very significant, make a significant impact now and also moving forward in our community, and we thank you for your service and we wish you the best in your next chapter.
I want to wish Barb all the best. I've really enjoyed working with you. I've just started rolling onto the negotiation team, and Barb has kind of taken me under her wing and shown me the ropes, and I really am very grateful for all of the time and effort that you've put into kind of getting me up to speed on things. I'd also like to thank you for the really positive culture that you've created around HR issues in Shrewsbury Public Schools. I feel like a lot of like the onboarding that you do, the interviewing process, all of those things really contribute to getting good people and getting good people to stay here. So thank you for all that you've done over the years. We really appreciate it, and we wish you well as you move on to your next chapter. Thank you.
So at this time, if our honorees would come up and shake the committee's hands and receive your token of appreciation.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good for you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for everything.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you for everything.
You guys have the heart.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Tom. Congratulations. Thank you, Scott. Congratulations.
Periodically, the school committee receives updates on the breadth and scope of nursing services provided within the schools. The enclosed report we had, we received from Ms. Freeman includes information on nurse visits, emergency preparedness and response, mandated screenings and staffing, and Ms. Freeman will be available to answer questions from the committee.
Thanks for having me here tonight. You're going to be tired of me, but here we go. So I'm starting off tonight's report with a couple of pictures of the team of amazing school nurses that I have the honor
Of leading for the past ten years.
Please keep these faces in mind as I share a little bit about the incredible work that they do, serving students, staff, and families of our district. I get to sit here and tell the story, but they do most of the work. So first, let's take a look at what the visits to our health offices look like over the year. So these numbers and types of visits stay consistent year to year. You can see here that most students and staff are visiting our offices for issues related to acute or chronic illnesses. And then there's this other health category, and that includes a wide variety of things that require assistance and/or assessment by the nurse, but they're not really falling into either illness or injury. So those are things like symptoms related to allergies or dental issues, skin concerns, or even, I forgot my snack, and the nurse has those magic saltines, so maybe she'll give me some. Then there's the injury category, and that includes injuries that occur both while students are at school and sometimes injuries that have occurred outside of school. So nurses often hear from students things like this, whatever the injury is, happened last night or over the weekend, either at home or at some sporting event, and whatever it is is still bothering them. So some of these students have been seen by outside providers and had their injury evaluated, but for lots of students, they're seeing the nurse at school as their first evaluation since that injury. So regardless of where it occurs, the nurses assess and determine if follow-up care is needed, and then they communicate with families accordingly. One of the other big chunks is our management encounters. Those are visits that primarily involve an exchange of information between nurses and either students, staff, families, or outside providers. So some of these are in-person, and some of them are phone communications, and they can be quick exchanges or longer, more involved interactions to help team members determine what health interventions are required and what follow-up needs to happen to make sure school has the information that we need to help the student be successful. And then finally, our behavioral health. Oh, boy. What happened? Our behavioral health category is our smallest category at about four percent, but those, as we've talked about in the past, are kind of hard to capture because with a hundred percent accuracy, because kids come in and oftentimes they have kind of a somatic complaint that then over time, we realize has mental health, kind of struggle at the heart of the issue. Hold on. Not sure why it's not mirroring.
This happens in the high school. It's fine.
Okay. We'll see how this goes. Thanks. Okay. So here is our grand total of in-person visits for the year-to-date. And as I was preparing my slides, I was told that I could not skip my, apparently, signature stadium slide. So here it is. With over sixty-nine thousand visits, we would, this is Gillette, and we would actually be overflowing Gillette Stadium. So I do still think that the stadium is a good depiction of just how many people come and go in our offices every year. At the bottom of the screen, you see that the large majority of our visits are the unscheduled or walk-in variety, so our school nurses need to be, and they are, ready to manage a wide variety of issues at any given moment. So when we do interviews for various school nurse roles in the district, I'm often asked to talk about what is the typical day like in the nurse's office? And that's really a tough question to answer, because although there are definitely some similarities day-to-day, we have scheduled meds and treatments that we know are going to happen. Really no two days are the same, and school nurses just need to learn to expect the unexpected, and they manage whatever walks through their door. So when we run our report for the summary of visits that I shared, the electronic health record allows us to look at how many unduplicated students we see. So eighty-four percent of students in our schools find a reason to visit the health office at some point during the school year. Some of these students might really only come to the nurse once, and they get counted, but some of these students have reasons to visit multiple times a day. This percentage is also consistent over the years at around eighty-five percent, and that represents fifty-two hundred students that are crossing our thresholds in health offices across the district. So when students do visit us, you can see from this number that almost always they're returning to class after being seen, even if for some kids, that's not their plan when they walk in the door. So students come to school to be in class and learn, and that's the message that school nurses share with students on a regular basis. The nurses provide care and support along the way to help make that possible for students, even the ones that aren't planning on going back. But then clearly, there are times that it is in the best interest of the student to leave school, and nurses are there to help make that decision with the student in collaboration with their family. When students are being dismissed from the health office, most often, they're headed home, or they're being taken by a family member to receive follow-up care with an outside provider. But then there are cases when the nurse determines that a higher level of care is required and EMS is activated. This school year, there were nine individuals transported by ambulance to the hospital, and you heard earlier this evening about the incredible story of one of these cases when the individual required life-saving CPR and the use of an AED. Fortunately, this kind of thing is not a common occurrence at school, but it does underscore the importance of having school nurses at the ready to jump into action, respond, and deploy emergency equipment when unexpected things do happen. Massachusetts requires that several health screenings are completed at different levels, different grade levels, from pre-K through twelve. And in my opinion, the most important of these screenings that school nurses do are vision and hearing screenings, and that's because these screenings are important early detection tools that can identify conditions that might interfere with kids' learning. Some people are surprised to know that over five hundred students were referred for further evaluation after completing just these two screenings in the past year. Most of those are for vision, some are for hearing. We are often asked about this part of it, so I think it's important to note that for kids who already have a prescription and are wearing glasses or contacts, those students are tested with those corrective lenses in place. So if they fail the screening, or if they don't pass the screening, that just indicates that they need to follow up. Kids' eyes change pretty quickly when they're growing, so they probably just need an updated prescription. Families of any student who doesn't pass the screening are sent a referral letter, and then that details the results of the screening and recommends the student be seen by a specialist for a more extensive exam. And our nurses are diligent in sending out the referrals and then following up if we don't hear back, because students who struggle to see or hear may struggle to learn and keep up with their peers, so it's important that they have that follow-up. Another Massachusetts requirement is that all school districts have a local wellness policy in place. While this policy doesn't technically fall under the Department of School Nursing, it does fall under the School Wellness Advisory Committee, which Dr. Sawyer mentioned earlier. I have chaired for several years. So Dr. Sawyer asked that I just share a brief update with you this evening about this policy. So the local wellness policy addresses nutrition education, nutrition services, physical education, physical activity, and wellness promotion across the district. It is monitored and enforced in large part by principals who consult with school nurses as needed. Per regulation, the policy needs to be reviewed at least every three years. The last time we reviewed it was in 2022, and at that time, the policy did undergo some major revisions. It was presented in full to school committee, reviewed, and approved at that time. So this year, we were up for our three-year review, and that was completed by the Wellness Advisory Committee. That committee is made up of a variety of stakeholders, including district and building administrators, a school committee representative, school nurses, teachers, parents, and Shrewsbury High students. So the WELLSET III tool, which is a tool specifically designed for review of wellness policies, was used by the committee to take a look at the policy, and at this point, no revisions are recommended. So now, thank you for all of your kind words, and as I sign off my last report for school committee before I retire, I would like to just take a moment to thank all of you sincerely for all of the support that the committee and the district have provided to me and my department over the ten years that I've served as director. I know from my interactions with school nurse leaders across the state that the level of support that school nurses receive in Shrewsbury is not universal, and I want you to know that it is both appreciated and critically important. I'm deeply grateful, specifically to Dr. Sawyer and to Meg Belcedo for their unwavering support of the work that we do. And I have to take this opportunity to say one more time how truly fortunate the district is to have a team of nurses who are so talented and so dedicated to the community that they Each and every one of them has a unique skill set, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank them for their work and their support of my leadership. Whether it was starting a new stock EpiPen program, that was of course spurred on by a very persistent former school committee member, the implementation of ever-changing COVID protocols to manage a pandemic that we had not exactly planned, been trained for, or more recently, increasing the number of individualized healthcare plans that we have on file for students, not because it will improve the the implementation of ever-changing COVID protocols to manage a pandemic that we had not exactly planned, been trained for, or more recently, increasing the number of individualized healthcare plans that we have on file for students, not because it will improve the work that they do, but because that's what the state expects, or any other crazy thing that I've asked of them. These women kept the grumbling to a minimum, stepped up, did their job, held my hand, made me look good when I sat here and reported on their work. I will forever be grateful for, to have traveled this road with them, and I leave knowing that the district is in good hands. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for having the Gillette visual. That's always my favorite because it really gives that picture of the amount of students that come in and the amount that's walk-ins basically. You don't know what's coming. And I think of last year, we were bringing some members of the SLUT board around the high school to look at the overcrowding. And we went to the nurse's office, we didn't want to stay. Someone's like, I feel sick, we're like, we're out of here. But it's, and that was just at the high school, I can't imagine at all of the other schools. So it's, it's a busy, busy area, things are much more complex. It's not just Band-Aids, there, there's a lot of things that go on. Increase in mental health issues that we're seeing, anxiety with students. You handle it skillfully, you and your staff, and it's, again, I think it is unique. You don't hear this. And I think we hire the right people, and you do the right things for students, and you always all go above and beyond. So thank you for your leadership, but I do have one question for that. Looking at the, the percentage changes of the different categories, and we have a much larger report that we received. So, and that will be on our website. So looking at that, you changed the methodology, the different systems? Is that why it looks like there's, if my math is right, it may not be, like a bigger increase in some of the categories? Does that do more to just the system itself and the amount of time?
So last year, we had changed to a different electronic health record. And throughout the year, we just decided that it wasn't working as well as what we had been using in the past, so we went back. So yes, last year's numbers were a little different, just because the way I was able to pull the data was different. This year's data should match more closely to other years. This year's report is being done later in the year than several years, so you're seeing May numbers instead of March numbers for a few years. But I think overall, they're, they're pretty stable.
Stable, great, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations once again, and thank you for your service. And I think I was talking to someone, I think to Dr. Sawyer this morning, about how important the, for some families, the, the support they need for their children, especially as Representative Kane mentioned, with kids with chronic diseases, constant care. And, and so I know families that stayed in Shrewsbury just because of the care that their kid receive in the school system. So that speaks volumes about all your leadership, your staff, entire team of nursing department does an incredibly well job across the district. So we are so proud to have you all here and under your leadership. And then the, the dedication continues even after you, you retire. So, thank you, thank you, and having, leaving that legacy, and also having such a great team within your team, within your arc. So I have two questions, I think I'm following up on that. So there are two, two segments that are, looks like an increase than overall past years, like illness and management. So management looks like a significant increase from, although if you take out the COVID era, so out, it looks like a management of the information sharing, working with parents and all those things. So is that taking, let's see, is that administrative task is taking a toll and time out of the?
So some of it is administrative work, but a lot of it is conversations that nurses need to have with families. Just to let them know what's going on with their child, or to get information from families, calls to outside providers to follow up if we have questions about what kind of orders we're getting, or information back from providers. Some of it is, I think, because we did so much of these kind of interactions during COVID, and we, you know, there was less of the other, nurses got better at documenting these. We used to not always document when we had a phone, you know, when we made a phone call if it wasn't part of a, a student visit. But I think nurses just got in the habit of documenting that more accurately. So I think we're just capturing it more now than we did in the past.
One, I ask one more, two more questions. So mental health is also one of the significant increase in numbers. Even, even if we take out the pandemic era, it still looks like it jumps right out of all the previous years.
So again, I'm not sure if that's because we're looking at a full year versus just till March. Like there's two extra months of number, of visits in there. And again, it's, I think it's just how things are being documented can change either nurse to nurse when we have a different nurse comes in, or our electronic health record, that's information that we have to pull out separately, it's not a category on its own. In the, so it is difficult for that to be as accurate as some of the other numbers just because of the way that we have to pull it out, so.
One, one last final question, thank you. So, the, one other instance that is rare, hopefully never happens again, but it presents a challenge itself, it's a life and death scenario. So we, not, it's a broader we, but the, the staff did very fantastic job in doing the right thing. But, so given taking that situation and looking at the broader across the district, if such, such a, such a situation arises in other schools, are we similarly well-prepared, trained?
I think that we are, all the nurses are of course CPR and AED certified. Two, myself and another nurse are CPR instructors. So we offer classes to, free classes to staff. Anyone who's willing to be certified, it's not something that we require of staff outside of the nurses, but it is an option for them. So we have kind of a small team or a small set of staff in each building who are prepared to step in and help. The high school is unique in that it has three full-time nurses at, you know, there all the time. The other schools have at least one full-time nurse, so that person is ready to jump in and can kind of instruct, would be able to instruct others to help in a situation like that. And we are fortunate that we're in a place where the EMS response time is pretty quick, which is also an important factor, so.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you very much for the report, it was extremely helpful. I just wanted to thank you and your team for all of the hard work. It's a complex job, it's not, it's changed a lot, I'm sure, over your career. And you really lead a team of very compassionate and caring individuals that, you know, give a tremendous amount of themselves to their jobs every day. And our students and families are direct beneficiaries of that. So thank you all for all that you do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, I said my piece earlier, so I won't continue to embarrass you. But I do want to get the opportunity to thank also the team of nurses, so many of you here this evening. Just a professional, skillful, dedicated group of, of nurses who do take good care of our students and our staff every day in our schools to a very high degree, large degree, as you can see from the slides. And again, just enormously grateful for your leadership and your contributions to the district over your time here, and wish you the very happy and healthy retirement. And again, happy that we could celebrate you this evening, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is a report on extended school care, an update and tuition recommendation report. Ms. Isaacson is here tonight with us. She's going to present information on and recommendations for the extended school care program. We've received her report, and she'll be available tonight to talk to us and answer our questions.
Quick refresher. Why can't I never find the button on screen sharing? Is it that, what's not that one?
Yep. It should be mirroring. It should be able to pull you up, it should recognize your computer. There we go.
I left the minutes right over here.
Thank you for having me tonight. It's really always a pleasure to come and just report on the excellent programs that are being offered to our students outside of regular school hours. Over the past year, we have provided more than three hundred enrichment classes to over eighteen hundred students in addition to providing extended school care for six hundred and twenty-five kids. I want to express my deep appreciation to all the educators who make this possible. The extended day staff is led by a team of twelve site coordinators and assistant site coordinators, and they create an inclusive and accepting environment for the students in their care. Today's students have increasingly complex social emotional needs, and the ESCE staff has done a really phenomenal job of adapting their practices and collaborating with school day personnel to provide safe and supportive experiences. For, for all of our students, but especially for our most vulnerable kids. It is an honor and privilege to work with them every day, and they've really risen to a lot of challenges in the past five years. And our programs are thriving because of it. I am also grateful to the dozens, I mean about a hundred educators who've done enrichment classes this past year. They bring their talent and enthusiasm, creating like up to twelve hours of content around a single topic, very engaging, and just immersing students in new experiences and hands-on learning. And if you had the privilege of walking through one of these programs like I get to do, there is so much joy in the building during vacation and summer. And I've had so many parents and staff members say, I wish I could take that class. Just really, really fun things. So it is, again, a privilege to work with such talented people who bring so much extra beyond the school day to our community. So here's just a quick breakdown of these numbers of who we've served this year and for what grades. ASAP refers to the after-school activities program, and those are hour-long classes that meet weekly after school. Summer and vacation enrichments, we've got a thriving summer robotics program led in part by the SHS Robotics team, as well as some adult coaches. And then this kindergarten summer fund program, which is kind of my next point for discussion, we have a recommendation around. Kindergarten summer fund is, we invite pre-case students who'll be starting kindergarten in the fall to come and get a feel for what school will be like. The teaching stipend and the parent fee has not changed in at least a decade, like not in my tenure. And in order to kind of bring the stipend up in alignment with similar stipends, we will need to raise the parent fee for the first time. So we're recommending an increase in the stipend from five hundred dollars for the week to six hundred, which will require an increase in the parent fee from one hundred for the week to one twenty-five for the week. And the program runs two and a half hours a day for four days in August. So that's a recommendation after a, a long time of stable program fees. More in depth is extended school care. We're showing steady enrollment, which is great, we're stabilizing post-pandemic, but we do continue to struggle with some operational stability. And key factors here are the number of families needing financial assistance continues to grow year over year. And the number of students requiring additional adult support also continues to grow. So there's staffing costs associated with, you know, maintaining the program. This year, we did have some unanticipated complications with getting the voucher program off the ground. And so we didn't receive any state reimbursement fees that, funds that did kind of place an impact on this past year. So you can see at a glance, you know, our after-school, interestingly, the FTE for after-school is exactly the same as last year, which really surprised me. Kind of a big drop in Sherwood enrollment made up for, you know, increases in the other, other elementary schools. I do think in part we're, we're seeing a decrease in Sherwood over the last two years as the dismissal time got later in the day. So that kids who take the bus get home a little later, parents are at home, they have, you know, a little more independence. Similarly, an uptick in before-school programming over the last two years as schools started a little later. Parents need to get to work. But overall, this is a, this is a good news picture of stability in terms of our enrollment after some unstable years. I strongly suspect that once we do start accepting vouchers, these numbers are going to go up as the program becomes more affordable to all of our families, and overall enrollment will increase. And the good news is we are on track to start accepting vouchers in September. It's a very involved process with state regulations that just took some side turns we weren't expecting. And, but we are on track. The challenge now is the amount of state funding that's allocated for the voucher program fluctuates. You know, with state budgets as well as the demand statewide. So right now, any family who calls to apply for voucher, they get put on a waitlist. And they can't even begin to guess how long that waitlist will be because so much is funding-driven. And that made it really tricky for me to put together this budget for you. If we said everything stayed the same as this year and no state reimbursement was coming back to us, we would need to increase tuition by a full ten percent. And that is something none of us are interested in doing. We, we've had several years of significant increases and really looking to avoid that. Luckily, I just kind of renewed the, the voucher training as a administrator. And I went, I went through that workshop again. And families who have an open case with DCF, or they are currently receiving DTA or SNAP benefits, are generally able to instantly access a voucher without going on the waitlist. So that's a chunk of families who can immediately get that assistance. Additionally, families who may, maybe they already have a voucher for a younger sibling in preschool or for a summer program, all they need to do is go to their voucher counselor and say, great, add my school-aged child to this voucher. And then that child will get that reimbursement. And so this allows us to, the parent pays a portion of a fee, and the state reimburses me the rest up to like our private paying fee. So I kind of took a stab looking at who our current families are, made a conservative estimate that twenty-five percent of our families will be eligible for a voucher right away. I made that assumption going into budget planning. We hope that percentage continues to rise as people get off the waitlist, but that, I felt like that was a pretty safe, conservative effort as we look to make a recommendation for fee increases. So the budget assumptions for this coming year, just for planning purposes, I'm going to assume enrollment remains the same as it has for the last two years, and therefore staffing levels will remain the same. Employees were planning on a cost of living increase up to three percent, which is kind of in line with some other district positions similar. Again, assuming twenty-five percent of families receive vouchers. We're expecting health insurance to rise by only four percent this year, which is a good news story. And then all of our other expenses, I'm planning to hold steady. I have really kept our discretionary spending at a level since before the pandemic, just really trying to control those costs as much as possible. So that gives us this picture, and it's probably hard to see on this slide, but just showing the, the bottom line, a net of about thirty-five thousand dollars. This is a very small cushion, as I like to sort of point out annually. If, if we lost one student per site, per our six buildings, this would not change my expenses at all. I could not reduce my number of staffing, it, you know, I'd save, you know, a hundred bucks on snack maybe. But I would, revenue would drop by twenty-five thousand dollars. So, so this is a very tight window that we watch really closely and track expenses carefully and try to adjust staffing to enrollment levels. But I, I feel like it's a, it's a conservative estimate and a good one. And so to, to arrive at this budget, I'm recommending a five percent tuition increase, which will allow us to stay. um, which will allow us to stay in the black. That means our, our current five-day after-school rate is 409 a month and that would increase to 429 a month. We, as, as part of this recommendation, for, at least for this coming school year, I'm recommending we keep our discount policy in place of the 40% and 60%, depending on, um, a family's income and whether they receive free or reduced lunch status. Um, I pulled together another quick local rate comparison and, um, you know, in full transparency, some of these rates are one or two years old in the other towns, so you know they're even higher now. And so when you look at our next year's proposed rate is still coming, really in the bottom half of these similar school districts with similar programs. Um, and I expect if I had the absolute most, if everyone else's 2026 rates were in here, we'd probably be closer to the bottom again. Um, but we're really well-placed in the marketplace as being an affordable program. And then just, whoops, sorry, that, you know, as we talked about sort of the increasing need of, for families of financial support, um, that number has gone up and up. Um, currently, 153 families have received support from us this year, which is fantastic that we are able to support vulnerable students, give them this high-quality childcare and these really great enriching opportunities. Um, and, you know, but it, it impacts the budget. So it's our eventual goal to really drastically reduce or eliminate our internal subsidy. Um, in the future, families will either have a voucher or they will pay full price, is I think the general vision that we share. Um, but given that uncertainty of the voucher waitlist, um, I am suggesting we keep the existing fee structure in place next year. Um, and then I will ask parents to maybe provide me verification that they have applied, that they are on the waitlist, so I know that they're moving in that direction, they've done their pieces of the paperwork. Um, and fortunately, the state has made this process so much easier in recent years. Um, there's an online portal where you can fill it in or you can simply call the Mass 211 line and ask for an interpreter in your language and they will help you apply over the phone in your own language. Um, so they've really, it used to be a lot more difficult, requiring a lot more in-person, um, visiting and I think the process is a lot more streamlined for families. So I'm in the process of reaching out to all our current families, explaining what's happening, encouraging them to get on the waitlist right now, um, as soon as possible. Um, and then also getting that read for, you know, I anecdotally know a few parents of like, oh, I know they have a voucher because they've been asking me about it and so it's kind of collecting that data for them as well. Um, and then I think we can just revisit that discount program next year at the end of the year to see really how this pa- how next year goes. So just in conclusion, in recommendation, we're recommending a 5% increase for extended school care tuition, um, and up to 3% cost of living for extended employees and continuing the discount structure as is. And then finally, increasing the kindergarten summer fund fee to $125 for the week. Any questions?
Just a comment, I support these recommendations, I think, especially around, you know, the kindergarten summer fund. It's been a decade and it's not a large increase, I think that's definitely doable. And, uh, looking, I'm glad you're going to keep the discounts in while we look at that voucher program and get that kind of settled out.
Yeah.
But I, I always do kind of worry with the, um, where we're subsidizing. There may be a family who doesn't qualify, but just above that.
Yeah.
So I think that may be a hardship for those families, so I, I hope we do get to that point where it's voucher or full pay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I'm happy that you're gonna leave the discount in and look at it for the next year. So thank you for doing that, but definitely support these increases.
Yeah, okay, couple of quick questions. Um, so, uh, that's a good, good, uh, insights on how the delayed school in decreased the after-school enrollment, but it is that, so we balanced it out, to my, to my understanding.
A little, it's a lot less revenue in the before-school program than after-school, so it, it, it did make an impact to the bottom line.
Uh, and then also maybe working from home had an impact.
Oh, for sure, yeah, still a lot of families working from home.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good because I think, given the trend where everybody, everyone is now required to go back to work, so hopefully there's a
Yeah.
much more, uh, need for, uh, um, stu- students to be engaged in the after-school program and
Yeah.
other activities. Um, so yeah, and I appreciate that. Uh, hopefully the voucher program gets streamlined and then families to, will be able to take advantage of that. Um, thanks for running through all the options that are available right away, uh, for the families. Um, and I, as, as mentioned, I'm totally in, in alignment, especially, uh, since this last 10 years back we increased. So it's a, it's a long time, definitely to, to have that adjustment of, um, and I do support that 3% increase to the employees. So that's well justified. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report, it's very helpful. Um, these enrichment programs are so wonderful. I mean, I, my own children did the summer programs, they're so well thought of, you know, thought out, very thoughtfully done. Um, I just had a question about the summer enrichment class prices. I know that we increased those last year, has that been a positive? Have we been able to cover our costs and where do you see that kind of going, um, coming up?
Um, it was very positive, I mean, it, it gave a much-needed increase to the stipend for the teachers, which made it a little more attractive to teach for teachers. So I saw the number of proposals going up, I saw some folks who had made, you know, teachers who'd never taught before or who hadn't taught in a long time coming back to it. Um, and that was a really nice feeling knowing that, oh, they're being compensated, um, kind of at a level, you know, an appropriate level. Um, and I, I didn't really get a lot of pushback around the fee. I mean, it went from $80 to 100 per week and then we're gonna carry that forward, you know, I expect for a few years. It's, we, we definitely cover our costs, we are still able to provide, um, a 50% discount for low-income families to try to make it more affordable to the community. Um, so I think that's, it's been a positive change, I haven't really felt any negatives associated with it. And this summer's enrollment is forecast, we're, we're already higher than we were last summer and, and I'm seeing a lot, we get a lot of last-minute registrations too. So this is going to be a bigger summer than the last one was, for sure.
Great, excellent, thank you. I, I would just like to, um, for those watching at home and to, um, have the community, if anyone would like to contact us regarding these increases, please feel free to do so. We will be taking a vote on these recommendations at our next meeting next Wednesday. So, uh, please feel free, free to reach out to us, um, with any feedback on these proposals. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, and I, I know Ms. Isaacson usually will send this information out to the parents in the extended school care program so they have that direct information and be able to contact the committee with any feedback that they have. So thank you for that. I want to thank Ms. Isaacson for the report and the presentation, uh, thank her for her leadership of the programming. Uh, you know, we continue to find ways to enhance, uh, the options that families have during summer, school vacation periods, uh, and certainly for the core program that happens before and after school each day, uh, through our, our K-6, uh, schools. Uh, I think that the recommendations are very sound and, uh, you know, I appreciate that. Uh, she continues to try to figure out ways to leverage, uh, opportunities like the voucher program and making sure that we're providing access, um, to families to the greatest extent we can um, and to this really high-quality programming and, and after and before school care. So, uh, I certainly support it, we'll look forward for any feedback we have from, uh, from families. And, uh, you know, we're, we're very fortunate in Shrewsbury to have, uh, such an outstanding, uh, enrichment program and extended school care program. Um, and want to thank all of the members of the program, all of the educators who taught in the enrichment and certainly our, our staff in the ESE, uh, for their ongoing work, uh, every day. It's, I, I had the wonderful opportunity for all of my children to experience that when they were in elementary school. And, uh, there, there's no question that it actually enhances the quality of their educational experience, uh, in, in Shrewsbury and that's something that's important. So, thank you and, uh, we really appreciate all the work that you and your team do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Um, the minutes from the school committee meeting held on April 7th and the school committee meeting held on May 14th of, uh, 2025 were enclosed in our packets, did anyone have any changes or revisions? Okay, those will be accepted as distributed. And then the next, um, I think we will now, I think that's all the business that we have tonight and we will be going into executive session. Um, so I will need a motion to adjourn, adjourn to executive session for A, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter 30A, section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose three, including collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Associations, Unit A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraeducators Association and/or Cafeteria Workers Association. C, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter 30A, section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, including the superintendent of schools. Purpose two. And D, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter 30A, section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts Student Record Law, purpose seven, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourn, adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I need a roll call vote, sorry, Mr. Bellagapootie?
Yes.
I, Ms. Fritz? I, and myself, I, thank you and good night.